Oh man, game time. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, you already know what it is, we doing, we finna do, we been doing it goddamn, and I know you been watching us do it, so it's time for the door again.
Smoke some bitch.
Special sessions, what is it, number seven? I don't never keep up with the number, this is special session.
It is number seven.
Is it number seven? I'm, I'm, maybe I do be keeping up with the numbers, god damn, you already know what it is, special sessions.
We going through them, are you?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Watch out a bitch.
Yeah, we bring goddamn one of the pillars of our community that own to talk to y'all, so we can tell y'all what they got going on in our motherfucking community, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
And right now, we got goddamn ba, 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 Zilla Balboa in this mother, I said Zilly, god damn, I've been drinking a little bit, Zilla Balboa in this motherfucker, ladies and gentlemen. Say what's up to the people.
What's that with?
Oh yeah, y'all see what we got out here, god damn, we got these exotic pops out this mother. I feel like you gotta put a, a pop on the P, god damn, but I ain't really good at that.
Exotic pop.
There you go, there you go, you better than that.
Put some answers on that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Test the pop filter on me.
Okay, then, yeah. Probably fuck something up, then, god damn.
It's alright, we cool, we here.
I got exotic pop cups and shit, yeah.
Yeah, you got to have the right cup to, if you got the right drink, you know what I'm saying, you do gotta put that.
Can't drink this shit out no regular ass cup in this motherfucker.
That's weak as hell.
Shit, wack as fuck, god damn.
It go, it go down different.
But ain't no money. Styrofoam, just don't let the police see it, they was thinking doing something me and Pope be doing.
You probably are.
Serious.
Alright, uh, man, we in here.
Ain't no money, he in the line.
How you doing today?
Man, blessed, I woke up early.
Ain't no money.
Nah, for shit show.
Yeah, the goddamn good week, man? How you week been?
I don't even remember how them hoes go, it just.
That mean it didn't, it didn't go bad, did it?
Nah, it didn't come still here, but you know, after a certain age, man, I just, hell, I be forgetting my own goddamn birthday.
No.
I feel you, man.
Yeah, I don't be studying none of it.
Yeah, I don't be worried, right?
Do the stuff you gotta do for that day.
I ain't gonna get that motherfucker though.
See, mother, yeah, motherfucker had to call and tell you happy birthday, bro, I'm like, it's today?
Yeah, wait, yeah, yeah, I think you a boy on this day, god damn. And I'm, I'm, my cousin told me this shit, and I, I took it to heart. He said a motherfucker go shopping for Christmas presents for goddamn two months, buy Christmas presents, a motherfucker buy a whole brand new Easter outfit for everybody in this motherfucking house. Motherfuckers celebrate all the holidays, except for your motherfucking holiday. And then with your birthday, it is free, you get one of them bitches a year, just like all the rest of the holiday, it's your motherfucking holiday. And since he told me that shit, yeah, like, I'm out here celebrating my birthday, like, it's supposed to be a national goddamn holiday, god damn.
I'ma tell you something too, some, some, some real shit. On them, let's say Christmas and birthday, right? Tell a motherfucker, you genuinely, you genuinely love him on one of them days.
Ain't no money.
But don't have no gift.
Oh, yeah.
But now you gen, bro, I love you.
They don't care nothing about that.
Man, that motherfucker gonna look at you like you crazy.
Like, yeah, that's cool, but, I'm saying though, like.
How much you love me, show me with some shit you bought.
That ain't enough?
Yeah, they don't care nothing about that, god damn. Show me how much you love me with some shit that you bought from me.
I gotta know that, but what you give me?
It ain't at all, but that's what a motherfucker expect from you, that, god damn. Don't get fucked out, you feel, what you got for me, god damn? Yeah, it's fucked up, yeah, money, shit got the world fucked up.
Man, alright, well, uh, you here for the first time, hopefully not the last time, so let's get to, uh, let's, let's start with your introduction. Let's start with the start of you.
The start of Zilla Balboa.
What, where you from?
I'm from Huntsville, outside.
Huntsville, Alabama, god damn.
Alabama.
Oh, really?
And was, was the, um, was you growing up in Huntsville? A situation where you were in a house with other people, you have siblings, were you by yourself, single mom, peoples, uncles? Did you have like people around you, or was you just?
I had, I had both of them, I had both of them, I had an older brother and a sister, I mean, the north back then, the north back then, that why I tell a lot of folks, especially rappers, I be like, say, bro, uh, and yeah, we went through some things, but I be like, bro, look at the north. Bro, we ain't have it that bad, is what you talking about? Cause I know, nigga, you had your mom and daddy, we just chose to thug.
I ain't, hell.
Now them niggas over there across university, they, they was saying, they had some poverty, really? Yeah, they were really going through, yeah, we just chose to thug.
It used to be niggas come to the projects, like, I'm from the projects now, like, nigga, I wanna be with you from out there, hear me?
Nah, but my folks, my folks, my mom and daddy from Salem, Alabama, Riceley, Sardis, so it's the.
Sardis.
Sardis.
I done seen that before.
Yeah, out in the country.
I done, I done seen the sign for it before.
Say it one more time for me.
Sardis.
S A D I S.
Sardis, yeah.
It's, it's A D I S.
I never seen, I ain't even heard of it.
I done seen the sign for it before, on the interstate, like, Sardis that way.
Cause you know you got a heavy ass accent, so I gotta make sure that I interpret it and some of the stuff, god damn, but, cause my mom come from Denver, Colorado, so she made me try to speak as white as possible.
Oh, yeah, this nigga be pronunciating like a motherfucker, god damn.
I don't, I don't like that.
Man, okay.
I don't like that.
I feel you, it felt weird growing up.
There's too many letters, god damn.
Yeah, well, like, 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 if you put the ending on your words, I ain't even.
It seem more natural to just let the sound be the sound instead of trying to.
Say the O I N G.
Why you gotta, yeah, why you gotta stop the sound? Why you don't just let it be?
Cause it don't come natural like that.
Yeah, I like that.
It, we down here, it down here, it don't.
No, that's what I'm saying, it's better to just let it roll instead of trying to stop it, be like, stop it.
Yeah, nah, stop it.
That one all like by Huntsville, uh, I got a love and hate, I'm born, I'm born and raised, I got a love and hate relationship with this, this motherfucking city because it's like, not me, cause I, I know where I'm from and shit, I been, I'm like, nigga, why y'all act like y'all ain't country, we country is a, is a fago in a glass bottle.
I will, I'll say this though, being from other places and what I, what I've seen throughout Alabama, Huntsville isn't very Alabama for real.
It's not, it's a conundrum, especially to be between places like, to be so close to places like Memphis, to be so close to places like Jackson, to be so close to Augusta, I don't even go to Atlanta, just Augusta and shit, like, we so close to places that Huntsville doesn't fit in that much, but it's because so many people came here from everywhere else.
Melting pot.
Yeah, from, from the arsenal and the military and all that type shit, so, everybody came from all kinds of, cause that's how my dad ended up down here working for, um, doing engineering for space shit.
Yeah, military, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, but that's, that's probably the biggest reason Huntsville is the way it is.
And motherfuckers who come here, they'll come to Huntsville like, nah, I was expecting goddamn, yeah, nah, it ain't very Alabama.
Yeah, I been told, they thought everybody, I, I, I was told one time.
You remember the girl saw the cotton field for the first time visiting in Alabama?
Yeah, that was wild, cause it's like, but it, but it made so much sense to me, at this point in my life at least.
Chick from up north rented an Airbnb in Huntsville, and they never seen a cotton field. One was right outside her window, she felt god damn, like, yeah, nah, yeah, yeah, okay, they put us, yeah, like, nah, this Alabama dog, god damn, we got cotton fields, god damn.
Folks told me that they thought everybody down here wore cowboy hats and wore.
Yeah, cows and chickens and shit.
Yeah, them, alright, so with your, with your brother and sister, y'all grew up doing the same thing, y'all spent a lot of time together, were you kinda like a loner, or y'all kinda like a clique?
Shit, no, I'm the baby, yeah, look, look, my mom and them, I don't know what type of fucking they were doing.
Nah, man, it's a lot of y'all.
Nah, 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 it's just three of us, I'm the baby though, I'm just saying. They, they wasn't fucking on the red, cause we so spread out, righteous, my family did function, I don't know nobody birthday, I don't know nobody, well, my brother, the only reason cause it's just the time, okay, he seventy-three, I'm eighty-three.
Okay.
He January ninth, I'm January twenty-ninth. So I know he is my sister, she the older, I don't know how old she is, I know it's fifty something.
Yeah, I don't know how my older sister is either, right?
I don't know her birthday.
I know what my mother's birthday is.
I didn't know my mama's birthday until she died.
Yeah, I, my mama's birthday was on July the fourth, so I knew that much.
My mama, my mama April Fool's Day.
Yeah, okay, then.
April third.
Hell, but yeah, I don't know my older sister's birthday neither, god damn.
Interesting, is that something that ever bothered you, or bothered you to this point?
Nah, I embrace that shit, like, my family, like I say, just function, like, we talked about this earlier on the ride here, like, all that good morning shit, nigga, we wake up, we walking past each other.
Yeah.
We don't eat, we don't eat dinner at the table, you know, don't do that shit, get your plate and go to your room.
Yeah, I always thought that was the TV shit for real, for real.
Yeah, we ain't doing it.
I seen, I, I was visiting some of my friends and shit, spending the night, and they goddamn, like, nah, yeah, we finna goddamn, like, what?
Yeah.
Fuck, we all doing, like, this shit weird, god damn. No, like.
Nah, I'm saying, that's how I feel when you go to.
Yeah, like, yeah, right, like, we finna eat together, like, y'all looking at me eating shit, like, this shit weird, nigga.
I eat around people, I get to eating like this.
Man, nah.
Century rules in the picture.
Man, okay.
Yeah, we just function, there wasn't none of that going on, we ain't with none of that emo shit.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, we don't tell each other I love you to this day. I don't do that with my partner, my homeboys be like, bro, you weird, you, you can't tell me you love me? Bro, you, as long as you know it, I ain't finna keep telling you this shit.
I thank you, I think this shit weird for real, you just keep like, if, if every time I see you, I gotta tell you I love you, it don't mean shit behaving, I god damn.
And on top of that, with my niggas, first off, you ain't getting them three, them three words, all, it's love, bro, it's love, it's A U V.
Man, okay, hey, this is a different word, god damn.
Other love.
Yeah, alright, it's a old Chevy pickup truck, god damn.
Me and my homeboys don't even dap, and that shit come from me, I ain't gotta dap you, my nigga.
Hey, I see, hey, nigga shit.
Right, yeah.
Maybe if we passing or something like a nigga see at Walmart, what's happening, nigga?
Right.
But yeah, nah, just, we here now, I ain't got that.
I don't know, I guess I am fucked up.
I, I don't know, man, I, I mean, of course, that's our perspective, and of course, this is a rabbit hole, we can go down, we not gonna spend too much time on, cause we'll be here all day. But I, I will say that I did grow up in an environment like that, not, not like that, I'll, I'll say that my family didn't do a lot of, it wasn't an I love yous and hugs and all that kinda shit, and I grew up in a, in a house with five, six people some, at sometimes, so, when it, when I was in a position where I was with somebody that started, that did that shit, and I saw the difference in it.
Yeah.
At first, for, for years, it was weird as fuck, at some point, it was like, okay, I guess that makes sense.
This shit make a difference though, especially with kids, god damn, this shit makes a difference for real.
Will, will change things.
Tell your kids you love them, god damn.
I tell my daughter I love her every day, but now my son, nah, nigga, we tough, we ain't doing all that.
A U V, man.
I barely speak to the nigga when we walk past, I'm like, what up, nigga?
Man, okay, slap him.
Right, watch out.
Alright, so, alright, growing up, you kinda, uh, had your own space in, in your hierarchy of siblings in, in, in your household? Um, there was a point in life where you started hearing rap, listening to rap, what was that like for you?
Oh, man, Kmart.
No.
Kmart, ain't my dad about me, a goddamn, me, uh, it was a Red Walkman, tape player.
Kmart.
Man, okay.
Yeah, and he bought me.
I don't, I think so.
I don't know, I don't know if they had more than one album, it's the Fresh Prince, DJ Jazz, that album.
They had a couple, didn't they?
And that hoe edited.
Oh, yeah, Kmart or Walmart good for that, you even hear none of that.
That was it for me, that was the first, you know, hip hop type shit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, did you, uh, have other people that you was fucking with, hanging with, that, that listened to that shit too, that you shared it with, or was that just kinda like your thing that you do?
Hell, nah, I wasn't sharing that shit with nobody, I listened to that shit amongst myself playing Mario Brothers on Nintendo.
Man, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't taking that outside.
Yeah. So.
Parents just don't understand. Are you, I know, shit, are you living the goddamn Fresh Prince?
Nah, I took Chris Cross outside, that were cool, but I wasn't taking it for the Fresh, I might got punched on.
No, shit, I had Fresh Prince in the window, god damn, it was at the N W A and shit though.
Yeah.
It started with N W A, god damn.
Yeah, you went from N W A to Fresh Prince?
I went through everything, it didn't matter, this shit come out, I'm fucking with it, god damn.
Um, so, did you, when you first started listening to Fresh Prince, when you first heard that, maybe when it got to Chris Cross, did you already start thinking like, hey, hey, this something I'm fucking with, I might do this shit, like, when I grow up? Or did you already have an idea of what you wanted to do when you got older?
Hell, nah, I ain't know, I just, I just let it play out.
This is how most, this is, I don't know a lot of motherfuckers who was like, yeah, when I get grown, I'mma do this.
Now these young niggas nah.
Think so? I mean, I didn't know a lot of motherfuck, we were just out here, god damn.
These young niggas nah come out the womb rapping. Nah, that one, what we was all, we trying to hoop, we trying to play football.
Alright.
Yeah.
Which one you prefer?
I was basketball, I was hooping, I shoot your goddamn lights out.
Nah, man.
Alright.
Man, I had a rough goddamn basketball career.
Yeah, your basketball.
It was just one in a mirror game, it was rough.
It was bad.
It was rough.
Yeah, alright, um, so.
I'm just saying, I can shoot it though, I can shoot it, but I ain't know they was blocking the shit. I ain't know shit. Life's something, damn. Don't play basketball.
And bitches ain't shit, but hoes are true.
They do, I know, I learned that before that, N W A was already out here, I learned that with N W A, they will suck the dick up in the pickup till they hiccup too.
Man, alright.
Smoke some bitch.
So at what point did the rapping actually start for you, you start being like, I'mma start doing, did you, you just one of the people that was like freestyling and fucking around?
Yeah, I could freestyle for shit, don't ask me to freestyle, that shit dead, hell nah, I can't freestyle.
That homeboy like that, he refused.
Yeah, uh, Lee, Lee High School, uh, Lee High School, it was a nigga from the east. Boss, we had J-Rock the Sniper.
Alright, ew, and, did he pass?
Hell, nah.
Okay, then, I'm thinking about somebody else.
J-Rock still.
He kill a lot of people, don't worry about it.
J-Rock still, uh, anybody know J-Rock from, hey, J-Rock wear, he gonna wear this in the summertime, he gonna wear toboggan in the summertime, like, sip chocolate, but, uh.
No.
Yeah, uh, he was rapping, 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 had tapes and all that, so, one day at school, they were like, he rap, if you trying to do it, so, at the school, I went up to him, I remember like yesterday, Carmelo Anthony was still a C Q, he had on a Carmelo Anthony C Q basketball jersey.
Yeah.
Toboggan.
Man, okay.
With a toboggan, I say, bro, you, they told me you, he like, yeah, I was like, I wanna rap, he like, well, shit, I'ma pick you up the weekend and go to the city, and it started from there.
Man, okay.
And I couldn't rap for shit.
No.
I was horrible.
Man, okay, I'm glad you got better, god damn.
Yeah, and then like, he had some heavier.
Oh, so you ain't never like, like, in the studio was your first time, like, you ain't never even tried to rap before that?
You a bold motherfucker.
Yeah, I could do this shit professionally, I heard it.
They, cause everybody know, everybody know their status in school, everybody know how popular you really were and were, everybody know who did this, that, and the other, and they know the other people know that shit too. So you talking about the nigga that everybody knew about and knew rap, he came up to you, and you just went with him and for the first time ever.
You finna rap, nigga?
Yeah, I'm finna go and dive on that there, it's just like jumping out the porch, you gotta go, you gotta go and get out there.
My way, sink or swim, god damn.
Yeah, yeah. That's bold, in the studio, I, you know what, you right, cause I, I, in the studio, I wouldn't have done that, I've done that shit, I almost drowned thinking I was the shit. Little ass.
It made me better.
No, yeah, if you learn in the studio, ain't no better way to learn for real.
Cause I'm, I'm, I'm around some, at that time, everybody was at, uh, Lil T from Oak Park, Loco, he from over there on the east side, damn near everybody from the east, them niggas were out rapping me, but it made me better.
Damn, your competition make you better, god damn.
Yeah, nah, they don't wanna see me now.
About to say, what was that like as you started progressing, or the first time you felt, like, people in there was like, oh shit, okay?
Cause I, I, I knew with rapping, I was like, it's the words, it's how you put this shit together, it's cadences, like, uh, how can I say this, uh, a nigga with a great cadence gonna outshine a nigga that's just rapping, now that nigga with that great cadence probably ain't talking about a bitch ass thing.
Ew.
But it just sound good.
It sound good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause Bizzy, Bon Bon is my favorite group, I go back and listen to that shit now, like, Bizzy, what the hell, you, you wasn't talking about nothing.
I don't know, Bon.
We've had an argument too, see.
Bizzy big boy, god damn.
He had a few verses.
Nah, Crazy, Crazy was the rawest.
I like Bizzy the most.
Uh, who had, okay, off groups, you can ju, who had the, well, ain't none of them have a great, successful independent career.
Best one though.
But, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Crazy did have the best solo. Yeah.
You done mad, cause you can just throw Twister out there and it trumps it off.
Twister one better than Bizzy.
Uh, shit.
Twister one better than Bizzy.
Uh, shit.
Twister was fire.
Bizzy ain't got nothing better than Adrenaline Rush.
I think so.
Uh, shit.
I think so.
Only thing you can put up is the, uh, Pocket and Biggie songs.
No, the Thug's crack, that shit is good as Adrenaline Rush.
That's a good song, that's fair.
No, sir.
It's a, it's a good song.
And, and Adrenaline Rush, the song in particular, cause the album was called Adrenaline Rush, right? But the song, Adrenaline Rush?
Number two.
Young Buck, a lot of folks don't know that was dude name, Young Buck, he killed Twister to me. And I'm calibrated at three sixty degrees, man, that nigga snap.
Psychodrama.
Yeah, that was the name of the group, but his name was Young Buck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The psychodrama was hard though, god damn.
So, so you developed at some point, uh, a style, I guess, maybe for lack of better words, that you realized it's something that fit you and that caught other people's attention?
Yeah.
And it kinda just went from there, what, uh, what was it like when you started realizing you was better than niggas?
That took a minute, that took a minute.
This shit feel good though.
See, I, I, at a, at one point in time, I was standing off with, uh, cause see, with J-Rock, we just going to the studio way on the south side off Lily Flag, and we just recording over, uh, other people, industry beef.
Yeah, YouTube beast and shit.
Nah, bro, I wanna record some original shit, so I kinda broke off and I went over there, cause see, the whole time, in the city at that point in time, we wasn't, we, we was normal, we weren't making no noise like Slow Motion and LaPone.
Right.
They was the ones that's slow motion, I'm just naming you, I'm like, that's the sound, I want.
Sound like music for the sound.
So I just split off and I went over there and started fucking around with Malin, I went from there, and then being around them, being around the G-Sides, the Christmas, the Bentley, and all of them, that made me step it up. So then, yeah, the niggas I was with, but yeah, legally rapping, nah, you can't fuck with me, bro.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you guys who don't, you, you can't, you ain't finna outrap me.
Uh, you probably was around these people long enough by that point in time that you were more comfortable to not be, uh, in the standoffish kinda role?
I'm still standoffish to this day. What you, what you mean?
As far as, uh, making the music and rapping with the people that, that you started out rapping with, or started out like, these people that, that you, that were the beginning of your journey up to that point? Where you was like, nah, yeah, these niggas can't fuck with me?
Yeah.
At the beginning, you were more like, I'm just gonna chill?
Yeah, I used to be scared to go on the yo.
Yeah.
Yeah, them niggas snapping, Loco was the first nigga, before they talk about Jay-Z and Lil Wayne with no writing, Loco was the first nigga I seen, he come out from there, no, where your pad at, bro? He ain't, nah, nothing.
I can't do this shit, sneeze.
Shout out to Loco.
Shout out Loco.
Yeah.
That's a hell of a sk, a talent right there, god damn, cause I'm finna read the fuck out this shit.
Cause, and a lot of niggas be lying when they say they don't write.
Nah, that just mean they be punching in most of the time, yeah, they don't go in there and just do this shit, they just take goddamn four hours to do this shit. I'ma say some shit.
Cause you might, cause everybody tell a lot of young niggas, bro, what you went off in there and punched in for them four goddamn, you might well wrote this shit.
Might well wrote this shit, yeah.
Sit down, wrote it, practiced it a couple times, or at least had something to go by.
Cause the engineer raping your ass whether you know it or not, that shit.
Yeah, perfect, I don't gotta do nothing, just pause, record.
Thirty dollars an hour, well, you know.
Oh, wait, there's a delete in between there.
Yeah, weird.
Record.
Yeah, yeah, all day.
How you, uh, how you get your name?
Man, hold on, say, say, so, when I started off with J-Rock back in like ninety-nine, my name was Le Alfa Five.
No, Le Alfa Five, man, alright.
Hey, but hold on, okay, ninety-nine, that was a fine name for ninety-nine.
Man, that shit was wack, that shit was wack.
Nah, that was a fine name for ninety-nine, if you had a disney yourself that now, I would be like, I'd laugh at you, hold on, for ninety, I'm trying to think, what music was out in ninety-nine?
Cash Money taking.
No limit in them.
Nine, nine, and two thousand.
Nah, that's, that's some unique shit right there, you, cause everybody had to live.
Yeah.
That was with Rolex, J-Rock with Rolex Records, then once I branched off in two thousand and ten and start fucking around with Slow Motion, another wack ass name.
No.
Man, say, Swagzilla.
No, I think I remember that name.
Yeah.
I remember hearing that name.
So look, shout out to Cody G.
I can't be too mad at that one either, man.
I remember that name.
Cody G, I remember to this day, I shout out, we at the studio, so Cody G come sit on the couch next to me, he say, he says, say, he say, you know that swag shit ain't gonna last forever, right? So I'm sitting, I'm like, huh? He like, bro, that shit, that just shit, it's a trend for now.
Yeah.
That day, Zilla.
Just Zilla, god damn, man, that's crazy.
Then the Balboa came on because that was the live mixtapes, that live mixtapes, everybody, everybody coming to my comments on live mixtape, oh, we thought this was Z Zilla from Memphis. Bitch, you knew I wasn't no Z Zilla, right?
Bitch, you could tell, bitch, look at me.
Then, okay, on album music, on the DSPs, my shit showing up under this rock band from Colorado named Zilla. So I was like, nah, I got Zilla Balboa, boom, go from there, yeah.
That's wild, that's, that's quite a progression of names, you went, you went from worst to best.
Yeah, yeah.
I could agree, I could agree with you, glad you ended up in Zilla, god damn.
Yeah.
And I'm glad CP, you said, who told you take the swag off?
Cody G.
Cody G, yeah, that all wrong, huh?
Yeah. It was a slow motion, wasn't it?
CP, Malibu, Cody G too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Cody, you wanna, you wanna hit a segment real quick?
We can do a segment real quick, I told you shit, it might get weird around here, god damn, it's finna get kinda weird, alright, so look, you know, um, would you rather, you done heard of this shit before? Would you rather do this, or would you rather do that, god damn?
Right.
You know what I'm talking about, motherfucker played the goddamn drum part of the game, we got something like that, so what you gonna do, we gonna do two rounds of this, um, the rules too, you, you pull two cards, you gonna read them, they gonna be like, would you rather do this, would you rather do that? Some of the shit get weird, god damn, we got the right to goddamn revoke one of the cards, god damn, cause some of them be some bullshit, so it'd be like, nah, put that one down, pick another one, god damn.
Okay, we have the right to say that, that was.
Yeah, no, you can't be like, nah, I don't wanna do this one, dog, god damn, yeah, so, um, pull two cards, please, sir.
What the hell, I'm calling, oh.
Oh, yeah.
Would you rather with the smokers?
Would you rather with the smokers, now you gonna read what's on them two cards, so we don't know.
Read aloud like back in school?
Yes, sir, please, sir.
Okay, so, uh, have a highly skilled hitman hired to kill you for the next twenty-four hours, that's one.
Okay.
Next, poop, poop a little bit every time you sit down.
That's fucked up too. That's fucked up too.
Ain't, uh, the third one ain't fucked up, to me.
The fuck one, it ain't fucked up?
I ain't studying none of that.
Yeah, he highly skilled though, the nigga, you got the reference.
I'm highly skilled.
No, okay, then.
Yeah, I'm hard to kill.
It is Balboa at the end of that name.
It is, god damn, it is, oh, so, so poop a little bit every time you sit down, this shit's out the question.
I ain't fucking with that.
Yeah, I can't, I, scared or not, I'm gonna have to go to the staff.
I think I agree, I think I agree.
You ain't finna give me no twenty-four hours, I'm gonna get you before that, yeah.
It's gonna be, I feel like it's gonna be tough, god damn, I feel like it's gonna be tougher than you think it's gonna be.
The only motherfucker you can say that me, eh, is John Wick.
Yeah, I'm thinking one of them motherfuckers, that's what I'm thinking, like, I highly trade.
Come on with it.
Like, he coming, god damn. But I, I think I agree though, cause poop every time I sit down.
I'm not, I can't live with that. I'd rather die then, so I might as well.
Nigga just standing up everywhere. Have a seat, bitch, you don't want me sitting out here. I told you. I told you, bitch, now I gotta go home.
So that's how it go?
We got one more round though, god damn. That one was kinda easy for you, god damn.
Yeah, that wasn't the most difficult we've encountered, that's for sure, there's some weird shit in that box.
Boom. Train daily with the ju- with the judge until you can, hold on, run it back. Train daily with the judge until you can put your whole fist in their anus. One more time.
Yeah, nah, take that one, put that one to him. Give me that one, man, put that one over here. Here, take another one, take another one, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna do that at all. Where the fuck these cards come from, eh?
Alright, so, wait, this one ain't even no, work on the re- work on the receiving end of a glory hole. Man, come on, man.
It's fucked up.
Come on, man.
It's fucked up.
Have everyone in the room discover your darkest secret.
That's fucked up too, I'm gonna have to tell my secrets though.
Yeah, I ain't studying, yeah, I'm straight, cause we ain't doing no glory hole.
I'm not doing a glory, I'm trying to think of my darkest secret.
I don't know, but I'm finna tell them all, god damn.
Like, I'm, I was like, this, this gonna get me out of it.
Nah, we ain't doing a glory hole. On the receiving end?
And some slow motherfuckers come out of nowhere and scoop you up, like, nah, that wasn't the darkest secret.
Nah, that wasn't dark enough, god damn.
You going to the glory hole, nigga.
I mean, I mean, say, man, hey.
What they talking about?
I ain't tripping, cause my history ain't no mystery, even.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what would be dark enough to be like, it seems like it's a pass for the glory hole.
I ain't got no fucking shit in the, going on, so I, I'll tell you.
Man, okay.
It seems like that's what you would have to have to go to the glory hole.
I'm not going, I don't know what you gotta have to go, but I'm not going, I feel like vagina is necessary. I'm not going.
Damn, I just said some shit that gonna give me cancer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we good, what time is?
I don't, I say, I don't care nothing about the cancer culture.
What does this say? Thirty-one forty, god damn.
Ain't no thing with a chicken wing?
I was gonna ask when you decided to take this shit seriously, but it sounded like from the very beginning, god damn. Seriously, god damn.
Yeah, I ain't play, I ain't play with that rap shit, for, oh, okay, so with J-Rock, I ain't, I ain't pay for, now, once I seen, oh, you gotta pay for this, yeah, yeah, this is my money.
Man, yeah, you right though, I ain't finna waste no money in this motherfucker, god damn, do this shit for nothing, god damn.
And I always knew this, it was bigger, it was bigger than here, like, I tell, I tell these niggas all the time, young and old, the world bigger than your hood, nigga.
World a lot bigger than your hood, god damn.
That's so true.
I learned this shit growing, like, I grew up in the hood, when you grow up in the hood though, you don't see the world for real.
That's all you know.
See, it's the hood, god damn, but I had no idea what the fuck was out here for real.
Yeah, you gotta move around and see some shit.
Get out of here, like, it's all kinda shit out here, god damn. Shit's amazing, god damn, I was stuck in the project, walking to the snow.
Yeah, that shit is, is different, man, it's different when you get to be around different people and experience a different environment. Even for short periods of time, obviously, the longer you're there.
I have, I have no desire to fuck a project bitch no more.
Yeah, no more ratchets?
Nah, for what? Even though they have some of the glory, the most glorious pussy.
Yeah, I don't know, just for fun. Like, getting on the swing, even though you old, like.
Mm-mm, that's dangerous.
I got kids, I'll be around a lot.
But it seem like that's all I end up with though. That's what I attract. Yeah, the jet, the jet hoe love me.
I don't, I don't like, I don't, I don't like it no more, I don't like the hell, you hear two different colors.
If you're not a jet hoe and you fucking with Zillas, you can find them.
Tell them where to find you anyway, what's your social media shit, god damn?
Instagram, one, the number one big homie, Zilla five times, five X, and here, Facebook, Zilla Balboa.
We gonna have them in the description too, so don't worry about it, ladies.
Yeah, stay the fucker, say the fuck out my inbox.
Man, you asking what's your slaygo, god damn?
Yeah, I ain't studying none of that shit you talking about, ho. Unless you finna put it in my mic. Yeah, so I get to my pocket. I was on that way before, before, bro, from Memphis. Yeah, bitch gonna have to break me, this, you gotta pay for the dick, man.
I can understand that.
We got recordings of you agreeing to this.
Yeah, yeah, nah, I don't, I don't disagree at all.
I, I, I don't see how these niggas willingly pay for pussy. How you willingly paying for pussy, man?
Pussy don't, I don't, I ain't never seen that shit for sale nowhere, god damn.
Nah, bitch, you finna pay me.
Can't get that shit off Amazon, I ain't buying it, god damn. Fuck you talking about, god damn?
Bitch gotta get the high fodder up off me, she finna give me the fodder, yeah, she finna give me the fodder, a meal or something?
Yeah, hell, you finna take me out here, god damn.
Y'all better start working these hoes, man.
First off, if you fucking for forty dollars, I don't even want that pussy.
Like, it was funny for a little while until it seemed like people really did it.
Forty dollars don't seem like enough, god damn.
It's tainted me.
This pussy got a lot of forty dollar goddamn business, god damn, I don't want that.
Favorite artist, favorite rapper, no, just favorite artist.
Yeah, there ain't even gotta be no rapper.
Scarface, okay. Have you seen anything about the recent conversation him and Willie D had?
Yeah, I seen that, I seen it, I was like, I told my partner, cause we arg- we arguing like that, I was like, he told it, I knew, I'm like, nigga, I would've been Scarface, I don't be giving a fuck about that emotional, I don't give a fuck about your emotions, nigga.
Man, okay.
Yeah, it, what happened, happened. So you wanna punch? You wanna go outside and fight about it?
So, uh, Scar, the, was it the Grammys, right? It was, yeah, it was the Grammys. The Grammys did the fifty year hip hop thing? With all the different people? Scarface came out and spit four bars from, uh, a song, a ghetto boy song. And when he got back to the pile, Willie wanted to talk about it, and he wasn't happy.
He was upset, cause he wasn't there, he was upset, cause it was a ghetto boy song.
He was upset that Scarface performed the ghetto boy song and didn't say nothing to him about it.
Didn't tell him nothing about it.
Said if it would've been a Scarface song, he would've been fun.
The people, they called me, bro, they called me.
Yeah, they called Scarface, they ain't called Willie D, and Scarface didn't know what song he was performing till he got there.
Oh, so they picked the song?
Yeah, the, the people picked the song.
And they picked his verse?
This nigga mad, cause he ain't get picked. This nigga mad, he ain't get picked.
It was, it was a little, Willie D was looking a little silly after a while. To say, just to initially say like, hey, I feel this way about this or whatever, okay, cool, get it off your chest. But after that, especially after Scarface was like, I didn't even know what song I was doing. It went on for a while.
Cause if you keep carrying on, like my partners, like, if you keep carrying on about us, I thought we got that out the way. Now you keep carrying, nah, my thing, so you trying to go outside, you wanna go outside and punch?
You must wanna fight, god damn.
They gonna get this shit over with.
What are we deep doing, yeah?
I ain't finna keep talking to you, man.
You must want, either fight or leave this shit alone, god damn. I, I totally agree, I absolutely understand, for the be yelling and shit, nigga, what are we doing, god damn it? No.
Too grown in, I ain't with that emo shit.
Man, okay. Completely understand, feel the same way.
See, it's so funny, cause y'all both like that emo ass song so much.
I'm just saying though.
That wasn't emo, that was some killer shit. I'm gonna tell you what's emo. What's the YB song y'all, uh?
Youngboy?
That's emo.
I don't know, I don't know.
These young niggas is that, the most emotional ass gangsters.
But that, for, to white people, that's, that's like the emo shit.
That was some killer shit.
Over here, we, where we at, is different, it might be emo over there, but over here.
Pleasant surprise for me, fellas.
I play that song, if I'm finna get ready to go on a drill or go knock someone out.
This might, they outside red the bus.
Now, is, isn't it all the type of music you would play right before then, kind of emotional?
No, hell nah.
Like, niggas be, eh, that's why it amped you up, cause it.
I'm finna play Tupac, Last Motherfucker Breathing.
Yeah, emotional isn't a bad thing, emotions can be any emotion.
Emo night, not emotional, I was thinking like, black fingernails and, and shit, emo.
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, that's the con- uh, not the context.
Yeah, you know, I ain't never put them two together, I didn't know.
Cause the people that would do that, they, they be like, oh, they emotional, they in their feelings, it's something wrong.
It's a grown, black man, man, leave your emotions outside, that ain't what we doing. If you, if you do got them, leave them outside.
I ain't a man, I don't even know what, you can't do nothing with them motherfuckers.
Alright, so what's your, uh, thoughts on current hip hop?
I fuck with it.
Fuck with most of it, all of it?
I fuck with everything that's going on.
Uh, I don't really like that, but I like the other people that he fuck with, like.
Whatever I don't like, I don't speak on.
What's some of the stuff you do like?
From Nudo, I fuck with it, man, I fuck with these young niggas. I fuck with the young, what's that young nigga from Jacksonville, I stayed in Duval for a little minute, that young nigga, damn near, it seemed like he, he whisper every time he rap, what's the name, y'all?
No, not the young twin.
Who, from Jacksonville, Jacksonville?
I don't know.
Y'all know who you talking about?
He got songs with Lil Baby.
I don't know none of the little niggas.
I feel like I know who you talking about, and I can't think of this nigga's name.
Hold on, let me Google it real quick. Jackson.
All I can picture is the nigga Kodak keep beefing with, but I know there's no who you talking about, but I, I, I know I done heard songs from this nigga that you talking about.
Who the nigga Kodak keep beefing with?
Nardo Wick.
Nardo, see? You remember, uh, you remember the Nardo Wick I played?
See, I fuck with the young niggas.
I knew, I, I couldn't think of the nigga's name.
My age don't fuck with the young niggas, but I be like, bro, they talking about the same shit we was talking about.
It just sound different though.
Yeah, it just different.
Cause I don't fuck with a lot of young niggas, they for real.
Shot his ass three, shot, what, shot his ass and he cried.
Now, young nigga, what they do, they rap, they rap about a lot of attempts. What the fuck you on the song rapping about a, an attempt for, you would, you ain't killing?
I almost killed that nigga.
Yeah, I don't wanna hear about what you almost did.
Hit the concrete and ricochet. Alright, uh, you got a, you got a favorite song that you did?
That I did?
Or we're on, or part of?
I ain't mad at you with Pope, uh, the song I dropped on my birthday, uh, My Thoughts Three, I got a My Thoughts on every project I done. So it, My Thoughts ain't gonna never stop.
Okay, then. I was listening to three yesterday, god damn.
It's really what I'm thinking at the time. And I'm finna spill it all on this one song.
So let's say, you can make a song, any artist, feature any artist, any of them, dead or alive, whenever, god damn, who on the? Zillion featuring Elvis Presley.
The nigga, uh, well, he had, he one of them, I got many, but he one of them, he still alive. Shit, Sauce Walker?
Sauce Walker, okay then, okay.
We be on the, we be on the same shit.
I've heard a couple songs of his I like recently. I just started listening to it for real.
I see a couple other connections there too.
What other connections?
We don't wanna talk about it. So, I know that you, uh, you coming back with a vengeance with this music shit. But I know that also in between there, you, you had this venture that you're currently still on. And that is what we have on the table here.
So, say, uh, I've been, I've been, cause they out of Houston. You know, that's the music I grew up on, that's why a lot of folks from Houston, I always ask me, like, where you from, nigga, I'm from here, but I, I probably sound like I'm from somewhere else. But anyway, I've been watching them for some years, so, my nigga Big Lee, shout out to Big Lee.
Shout out to Big Lee, god damn.
He know him, he know the owners, so boom, I said, say, man, uh, tap me in with them, I'm trying to bring this shit out here. Put us on the phone one time, now, you know, me, I'm moving off pure nigga though. Yeah, I'm on some, some, say, let me buy some of y'all shit. They like, mm, what's your LLC, what's your business, I'm like, nigga, I ain't got none of that.
Man, well, I got a book bag.
They like, nah, we don't, we don't do that, so boom, I waited about it. So, I went to Dallas, came back from Dallas, I'm like, man, I got to do something. Lee, I got, I got my Ken people, he got a business, he got a car lot, cause that's all they want, it's a business to. Lee, get us back on the phone, my Ken people got a, a car lot, use his business, shit.
Which one we got in here, god damn?
Ah, that's that, that mo, R.I.P. the big mo, that bar yard.
The big mo, bar yard, the grape soda, okay then, then we got the Trilog.
Bumbe orange.
Bumbe orange, god damn, oh shit.
I know somebody that stole his verse and used to rap it to act like it was his own.
The big hawk fruit punch.
I done went with it high school with a nigga, and I ain't peeped it till I was grown, he rapped the verse. He moved down here, he's from New York, blood nigga from New York, came to Johnson when I was there. He got his little piece of paper and P, he rapped the verse, I'm like, bro, this is some hard ass New York shit. Get on down and get grown and listen to the MOP. Hit us a MOP verse.
They happened to me, I didn't know it till probably five, six years later. I was like, dang. Dude used to be rapping. And we got the, uh, we use for the, um, drink of the week, y'all check out Drink of the Week, we on episode seventy-one, uh, it was the.
There you go.
Exotic summer soda.
Exotic summer soda, and we use this cream soda, uh, soda mousse to make our drink of the week, it was fucking wonderful.
It was delicious.
It was great, it really was.
I'm in one of these exotic pop styrofoam cups. I got two of them, I guess that's the double cup, ain't it?
And we got the Fanta from overseas for that ass too, see, so.
You gotta get this shit to Japan or something.
Well, now you just hit Zilla.
He been going to Japan. He better not, he better not. Yeah, I put my shit online, Kato Jackson. Google the shit, everything, ain't nobody named Kato Jackson. Put these songs on here, god damn, and Kato Jackson, next day it's a Chinese dude named Kato Jackson, god damn. This nigga got a song on my motherfucker album somehow, god damn, I don't know how to fucking work, god damn, yeah. Fucked up. Bullshit.
Yeah, you thought.
Yeah, fuck you, Kato Jackson, yeah, bitch, god, yeah.
Yeah, we gonna, uh, we gonna have the links for this, for, uh, all the information to contact Zilla. To, um, get, eh, uh, the pops, the exotic pops, uh, anything you wanna talk to him about for music. Um, any ladies that's trying to put something in his pocket for the get down. You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying, so, without, we didn't, nah, we specified, it wasn't something strange, it's money. Hey, man, I appreciate you coming through, man, I know it's been a while since I hollered at you.
I'm coming back for a shit show. Cause I feel like, cause if this over, I, I ready to talk some more, you.
Man, okay, now, we still got some more shit to do.
We'll, we'll do a little shit talking there then, you know what I'm saying?
Cause I think the people gonna like me, y'all, y'all, y'all come in on this and, and.
Yeah, let us know what you think, god damn, say some shit, we might say some shit back, we might just hard this shit, we say good shit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm finding the comments now. We gonna say some shit back, uh, askthesmokers@gmail.com, uh, the Smoking Permitted Podcast, just Google it, wherever you see the links at, that's where we at, nigga. Fuck with us, like, comment, subscribe, notification thing, share, all this shit, eh, we'll see you next time on special session, man.